I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Councilor Gerson.
That's it.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor Tross.
Here.
Councilor Goble.
Here.
Councilor Gorley.
Here.
Councilor Coleman.
Present.
I'll let the record show we have all present for the council meeting this evening. Consent agenda.
Show move second.
Motion second, all in favor, and we will do it by roll call because we have video conferencing. Motion second, approve consent agenda.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Councilor Gerson.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor Tross.
Yes.
Councilor Goble.
Yes.
Councilor Gorley.
Yes.
Councilor Coleman.
Yes.
Record show we have seven yeses and no nays. Moving on to recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. We have a guest this evening. You'd like to come forth and, or you could stay present, it's up to you.
That's you.
Yeah, that's you.
I was waiting for others. Does it know that he be for you? So, do you want me to come forth?
It should be fine right there.
Here, councilors, thank you for having me. I am here to present the financial statement audit for year ending June 30, 2019. Realize that this is about a year or so after the numbers. So typically I do a summary, giving you kind of the health of the funds. I figured at this point, the numbers were so far off that it would probably do no good. And so, just going to go through the financial statements, we'll talk about opinions, we'll talk about changes in presentation and letters to the county. Okay, you should have a copy of the financial statements, good city sweetheart, and that we may receive those in advance and hopefully you have an opportunity to review those. If not, you can get a, ask questions, happy to answer. So first thing I'd like to cover in this financial statement document is our letter in here. There are only two pieces that belong to us. One would be our opinion letter, and the other is our letter in the back to the state. The remainder of this document belongs to the city. And with Brandon's help, we prepared this, but management had all the input and approved everything that's in it. So on, should be on page... Start on page seven, as our auditor's... And out, according to statements, financial statements are presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Talks about management's responsibility related to financial statements. It also talks about our abilities, the auditors, and provides the most important piece of information or the piece of information you're probably most interested in, and that's the opinion. The opinion for June 30, 2019 is unmodified, that's good. It also talks about emphasis matter on the next page. And there was a new Government Accounting Standards Board pronouncement that was in last year by all governments that have debt. And so, related to debt and debt extinguishments. And what it did was it changed the financial statements just a little bit. The presentation is slightly different, not a lot of different information from what you're used to seeing, just different in the structure. So in the debt footnotes itself in the financial statements, you'll see that laid out differently. And you'll see direct placements laid out differently from bonds that are issued on the open market. It also talks about like defaults, if there's defaults in any of the debt, what that looks like if that was to happen. And so, if you have questions as you look through that, please let me know. One other thing regarding the presentation of the financial statement that I wanted to point out was in your basic financial statements, beginning on page... This is related to proprietary funds. So on page 26, you'll know rather than seeing, you have 12 enterprise funds. Rather than seeing those funds presented as major funds for each one, and non-majors in the back. State Oregon did field reviews for the division of audits last year. And one of the things that came out from that was that they took exception to how cities were presenting auxiliary enterprise funds, such as SDC funds, capital projects funds, those kinds of things. They, they seemed to think that it didn't meet the letter of the character of an enterprise fund. They suggested that they be moved to governmental funds, which, based on the fact that the revenue streams don't come from there, that didn't seem correct to us. So in talking to them, and in looking at a number of other cities and how they structured it, they suggested that operations funds for each of your different types of services be kind of a roll-up for front of the financial statement presentation. So your funds still remain intact, they're all still in the back. But for the roll-up to the front, you'll see it combining in the back, that sums up and then comes to you. So, so that's just a change in the structure of the presentation. Doesn't change the character of those funds at all. But I wanted to make sure that you noted that because that's a significant change. In the very back of the document is the letter to the state of Oregon. And this talks about all of your compliance with the ORSs and with budget. You did have over expenditures of appropriations, and you did have deficit fund balances. So those are detailed in the notes to the financial statements. And you'll want to, if you haven't already, want to address those. We did issue a management letter this year, so that should have been provided in your packet as well. And it really is, relates to account reconciliations and having everything prepared and ready for the audit. And that was, I mean, here we are, almost a year later, finally getting to be issued. And I realize you have this big move, you had a lot of things going, but just in the world of auditing, not having those accounts reconciled timely, I mean, it's just a big deal for us. So I'm hoping in my conversations with Brandon and with Ray, that that's been resolved and it's being taken care of. In the governance letter, which is the third piece that I have for you, this just talks about our communications with you, which we've gone over, all the changes to the financial statements. We've talked about the management letter. Included in this is the list of adjustments that were needed to be posted in order for the financial statements to be presented accurately. And you'll note that there's a number of them, and that was directly due to the fact that the accounts were reconciled. So, and that's really all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, councilors?
You seem so far away.
Councilor Nash, Councilor Goble, and Councilor Gorley, any questions?
No.
Nada.
No.
Oh.
Yes, I, with the accountability, it would be a concern for us circumstances.
Right, right.
You're now without same situation.
Yes.
There's going to be some discussion.
Absolutely, and if this next year, that hasn't been resolved, that, I recorded it as a significant deficiency this year, knowing the circumstances. It could potentially move to a material weakness because if you're not looking at numbers that are reconciled, you're not looking at accurate information.
Thank you very much for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
For presenting this and all the efforts you worked and put into it.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
We greatly appreciate the partnership you have with your...
Thank you, we appreciate working with you. Thank you all, have a great evening.
At this time, I will open up for any other recognition of visiting hearing petitions. If they might come forth, roll call. Moving on, old business ordinance, number seven for 2020, larssystem and critical effects against...
Well, this is the gift that keeps on giving. We've been discussing this now for quite some time. Robert has, I think, collected all the relevant information to answer all of your questions. And so, we'll, we will turn that over to him. And I believe this begins on page...
Which one is it? Fourteen.
Page fourteen of your packet.
That's the RCA. And if there's any questions about what I've written there, I can certainly go into it with you. But basically, the ordinance is simply that the water in this area has, over time, improved to, to an extent where the DEQ helps with this amendment to give the well owners out there the option of being on city water or not after it's been reviewed by the DEQ for individual cases. So this was just, this is just an amendment to add this exception to the ordinance we already have. Any questions, councilors? Councilor Gerson?
So, where, do you want me to connect this, maybe Brandon can help? Your district, their district office of water, how does try to still, if you're still there, taking all the water you need?
It's a, it's an average. So we take what the, the average sewer ratings across the city and that against the sewer home rate for, for those homeowners.
And I think there is a few. Oh, there is, there is, yeah. There are already, there are already a few.
Yeah, and I think the average is in the low $70 range a month currently. I don't have the exact number, but it knows in the $70.
There's a function we already do.
Yes.
So it's placed in the quote.
Basically, if they use the minimum amount of water, like I do, when they're, and they go on their well water, their bill is really going to be higher if the, for the average two, is that correct? Because my bill's $61 a month.
Right. Yes, it would be, it would be higher.
Be harder than what they may be paying now, right?
Yes.
Any other questions, councilor? Councilor Gath, Nash, Goble, and Gorley, you have any questions?
No questions.
No.
Do you look for any directives on this, to do the show?
Yeah, we're looking to make a motion to move ordinance number seven for 2020 to a first meeting.
You, councilor?
So, I make motion to move ordinance seven for 2020.
Awesome. I have a motion in a second, again, for the video conferencing, roll call please.
Councilor Gerson?
No.
Councilor Nash?
Yeah.
Councilor Tross?
Yeah.
Councilor Goble?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Record show we have six yeses and one nay. Four to thirteen. Moving on to new business, information only, cities we don't fleet policy revision.
Yeah, this is information, again, information only, we're presenting it to you so that you have time to review and look through it. We have a, an active fleet policy, however, had not been updated for, since I believe 2011, the original one. So this new one is updated, it's essentially a template, which is taken from CIS, and we incorporated their updates and, you know, those updates which we felt were pertinent and important to us. The big one being the driving age. We hire several part-time seasonal work, and we've been fortunate to have a couple outstanding seasonal employees, but they weren't 21, and technically, they probably, they should not have been driving city vehicles. We'd like to have those people back. They're now 19 or 20, and we'd like to be able to allow them to drive vehicles so they can take care of the parks. And again, that's consistent with the CIS, which management pool, advisory squad.
Any questions, councilors?
This is Lisa. What is, what is our insurance say?
CIS is our insurance, so this is their policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilor Goble, Nash, do you have any?
No. No. No.
I noticed on the draft testing, it says may require there is an accident, right?
Correct.
So, if, if there is an accident and what, and the employee is taken to the hospital, and hospital doesn't drug test, we aren't privileged to that information, are we? Because it becomes part of our medical history, is that correct?
We would be able to, according to the contract, get a drug test and get those results.
You saw what she asked.
Well, it may not be there at the hospital, however, Samaritan Occupational Health is who we contract for with those, for those tests. So the corresponding doctor may or may not do that test, but we would be able to request it and get those results.
Well, sure, I, I think if you're involved in a class of any kind, I think it should be mandatory.
And that's been our practice.
Okay, but it never say that it's a man. I know, I read some data, it said you can't, but it was unclear to me that it is mandatory.
If, again, as a policy board, if you want it to be mandatory, then you would instruct us to change that to shall.
We need that shall. It may require, yeah, it doesn't say you will, it just says you can ask for it. And then also, I have another question, well, let's get through this one, I have another question in a second. I think it said you could say shall. Only because, I'm saying a lot of things for us, if, if the, if the doctor does that, or the police do that, I don't know if you can do that with the HIPAA thing. I don't know if you can ask the doctor to give you that, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I, I agree that there could be some HIPAA issues there. If it's, for instance, if it's an accident where the employee goes to the emergency room, and the emergency room does blood test. I don't know that the emergency room's practice is to do drug screening though in those instances. But we certainly, based on our union contract, contract, and on this, can request that they be terminated.
Yeah. But the equation will be... And actually, the way, something should say shall.
How far across that, or somebody else, did you first have to do a dance or something? Well, we, if, if, there's going to be a limit to it.
You know, if you snap your fingers and hand on something, that's probably not, it would be, but if you're backing a vehicle into a fence...
Should that require, if, if you back your vehicle into a fence, if you put shall in here, we're now paying for that drug test.
I don't have a problem with that. Yes, my, my savings are impaired, impaired, you don't know. You made a lot of love in the first time, second time, you're not so lucky. And I don't know how many we've had, maybe we had one, or something happened. But I don't know how many that, those happened. But I know in, in private sector, there are a lot of companies that say, if you're in a car with a vehicle, you need, well, it has to run over it. Something, you're going to be drug tested.
Yeah, I'll have to do some checking with CIS. The fact that we are a public employer affords people a lot of different rights.
Okay.
Compared to private employer. So I'll, I have to do some checking.
Okay. I'll do that.
There's a couple of titles in here that hopefully will help. And the other thing on...
There's nothing else. So it also says we do random testing, do you guys do that occasionally?
We do, yeah, and that's part of the... DOT, because there, our full-time staff have requirements for DOT.
And then it also says something about not catching, which is the law.
We have...
I don't believe they should be even, right? That's another, to me, that's another thing that...
So that's, that's, that would fall under distracted driving, I believe. Which is, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, the criteria for distracted driving, which would be illegal if it falls under there. Jeff, can you help me out there?
Yeah, you're correct.
But it doesn't say that they, it doesn't say that they should...
Can you hear me?
It says that they... Pardon? Confirm me again. Oh, yeah. I don't think it says that they can't be, I think it says that they shouldn't be, or something to that effect.
I believe it does say they don't, they have to follow applicable traffic rules, laws.
Well, I would encourage you to look at this thing, because I don't think it says that they can't be. I think it just says that they should, or possibly something on that, or, I, that's just what I'm thinking. Okay.
Do you know what page that was?
Yes, page seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, you didn't do that.
Yeah, I saw you on the list, that's why I asked.
You want to know the line too?
Sure.
Okay, so my next question was, so I, I just want somebody to define minor accident. I don't know where that's going to, like, that councilor Coleman said, what is going to be the line that you draw for, for the test? And I, I do get that, I don't, you know, there's certain things you're, you know, you make, these things happen sometimes. It's, you know, when we're not, it was a good story, but you know, it's, anyway, I don't know, maybe somebody clarified it for me some more. Okay.
Any other questions, councilors? Okay, moving on, request for council action, resolution number 14, 2020, resolution 37, civil pen.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to, to Robert and let him...
Sure. Basically, this is like my RCA states. We looked in the, when we were looking over the code, I came up with this as in, we were looking over fees and stuff to see if we wanted to stick it in our fee schedule or whatever, and we decided not to put it there. And so, basically, we have four references to civil penalties in our various code sections. Two of those already have the penalties right in the code section as you read it. Two of them said, set it by resolution. Well, this resolution on page 69 is that resolution they're referring to. So that we have a resolution on the books for those two sections that say, set it by resolution. This is what, this is why we're doing the resolution. And it's sort of, I tried to make it basically the same as the, one of the others that's already in the code, and then it also is basically the same as we use for our violation system that goes through court. It's at the $500 level, just like this is. So that seemed to be consistent. So that's, that's why we've got these. Any questions, councilor? Your council director? A motion second, roll call please.
Councilor Tross?
Hi.
Councilor Goble?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gerson?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Seven yeses and one nays, approval of resolution number 14, 21. Next, request for council action 2019, audit contract.
This is on page 70 of your packet. As you just were reintroduced to Catherine of Grove, Mueller, and Swink. This simply renews our agreement with them. I'll turn over to Brandon if you have any additional questions. I'll remind you that historically, they've held us at the $30,000 mark for several years with no increases. We anticipated an increase this year in the budget, so in the budget which you're having your public hearing on here shortly, that number that we plugged in, we guessed could be up to 40. As you can see, they only asked for a small increase of $4,000, so. Other than that, if you have any questions, I will share with you that I've, again, in my history in Washington State, this process is done by the state, they have audit teams throughout the state. And I will tell you, I think we get more production quicker, faster, and friendlier with Grove, Mueller, and Swink and Catherine than we do with the state of Washington. Don't quote me, please.
Thanks for facts.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, Catherine's been great to work with, very flexible, and as you can see, forthright and forthcoming as well in areas that we need improvement, which is what it's all about.
I know for over a period of time, they really haven't faced all that much for all the years, you know, we started with, oh, the twenties. Where they're at right now, we're having the university, the...
I agree.
So, any councilor have a question? Councilor Gorley, Nash, Goble, do you have any questions regarding this?
No, I don't.
No.
No.
Your council director? Motion second, roll call please.
Councilor Nash?
Yeah.
Councilor Tross?
Yes.
Councilor Goble?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gerson?
Yes.
Record show we have some, this is one nays approval of contracts. Next up, request for council action FEMA, state of Oregon, structural contract.
This begins on page 79 of your packet, with an RCO. In a nutshell, this is an agreement so that we can claim FEMA funds for our COVID-19 response. If you have any additional questions, I would point you to Director Mish. She's been overseeing and tracking all of those expenses as well.
You going to do the council?
No.
No question.
No question.
None here.
Your council director?
The move is recommended.
I'll say. Motion by counsel Gorley and second by counsel Coleman. Roll call, please.
Counselor Goble.
Hi.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson. Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
I'm sure we have seven yeses and one nays approval of the FEMA state organs. Next up, request for counsel action city managers contract.
This begins on page ninety seven of your packet with the R C A attached to that R C A. And I apologize, I'm still not sure exactly how that happened, but you should have also received a follow up email from me, which includes the strike through. But you should have the strike through, which indicates the changes in red and then a clean copy following that. The the changes essentially ask. For use of a city vehicle for on call status, an increase in vacation allotment to the second step for all city employees. Everything else is simply updating current address for city hall or otherwise technical in nature. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
I the residency thing is something that I would like to see. City. Boundaries.
As I say, three years ago, that would have been great to know, but I've already bought five acres to try to build on, so. Yeah.
I think in that contract, I would like to see that.
I will share with you that in some places that exists in places and it does not exist in places. It's kind of in either here or there.
They do.
Lebanon does have that requirement, correct?
That's all right. I have a wish to your.
Not even hope that.
But he's not very.
I think some, well, I think some of those, if they take a vehicle outside the city and stay, have been a certain amount of time, didn't they? I just heard that too. You know, I don't think you don't think I do that. Some of them just have, and it's the same thing with fire, they they know that too.
He's like seven miles.
So so counsel Trask has a bicycle. It could be going downhill.
Maybe you're going to need a ride a moment to it, or I gotta get back to it.
Any questions?
No question.
No. Nope.
You need a council director. Need a second. No, seconds, I'm sorry. I have a motion second. On their revival, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Goble.
Yes.
I'm sure we have seven yeses and one nays approval of the city and. Question city, counsel action enterprise fleet management.
This begins on page one oh seven of your action. I just had a flashback of my junior high math teacher scolding me for saying one oh, one zero seven. So fleet management has been an issue for the city in the past. Upon Greg can attest upon his arrival a couple of years ago, our newest vehicle was ten years old.
Pushing eleven.
Yeah, and several vehicles that were in the fleet or maybe while they've been rotated out, but are even as much as twenty years old. The problem with that is you spend so much time maintaining them that you have them off the road, potentially as much as you have them on the road, as well as simply the costs incurred with the maintenance. So when you combine those direct costs with the opportunity costs which are lost due to downtime. It's really not a great way to do business. Enter enterprise fleet management. I'll be honest with you, I tried to find and I even compared and told Brandon that this looked like Enron math to me. But when it was explained. As a government organization, we get discounts due to state bid prices that we're able to take advantage of. Which essentially gives us instant equity in in our fleet vehicles. And so enterprise, which is the same enterprise that you rent a car from. Basically gets the same advantages because they buy in bulk, like buy so many vehicles. And so what they will do for a very nominal fee is actually help you manage so that you purchase a vehicle and sell it at a point where you get the maximum return. That also ensures that your fleet never really gets that old. That shouldn't limit your downtime and your expenses because all of your fleet should essentially, for the most part, still be under manufacturer's warranty. So it saves you on any maintenance expenses you would have, other than basic changing the oil, those type of daily upkeep things. And covers any costs outside of that under warranty. And then when you sell and resell, you're getting the maximum dollar on that. So you have fewer. Lost workdays in the fleet. You maximize the return on that investment of the fleet. Your fleet is always up to date and other cities that have used it have been successful. And. Yeah, and I'll let Brandon add on to there as well.
Actually, just please as the council, Ryan, did I say that right, Ryan? With enterprises on our video system today to kind of walk you through what it looks like so that you have a general idea of this. They can do a better job, they can do better sales job than we can. So Ryan, if you can hear us.
I can hear you all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
And he's got a short presentation and told him to keep it short, just to kind of walk you through the specifics of this. And certainly, he's the person to ask any questions that you may have of this this Brian, I'll let you take.
Awesome, thank you very much. So yes, my name is Ryan Alford. I work for Enterprise Fleet Management headquartered here in Tuolton, Oregon. I live in Sherwood. And I had the pleasure of meeting Brandon at an O G F O A conference a little over a year ago, as we were presenting there our program and some of the success we've had with other cities and municipalities here in the state of Oregon. So I'm just going to give you a high level overview of who we are, what we do. That was actually a great introduction of 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 our program in a nutshell. And then I'll be able to answer any questions you all may have. So I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully you'll be able to see it here. And let me know if you can't. So basically, we are a sister company of Enterprise Rent A Car, but we are the fleet management division. And most people don't even know we exist. But government is actually our fastest growing segment of our business right now. So what we find is that our partnership with local cities and counties has been pretty successful and a lot of it has to do with basically how you all buy vehicles currently today. And then matching that ability with our expertise, you know, our buying power, our infrastructure, and most importantly, our resale avenues. Enterprise is a company buys and sells about a million vehicles per year. We are in the vehicle industry. There's a lot going on right now in the vehicle industry, as you all may know. We're trying to navigate through that the best we can for us and for our clients. So just to give you kind of an idea, here locally in Oregon, we work with about close to fifteen government agencies between special districts, cities and counties. We've only been in the state of Oregon for a little over five years in this industry. However, our California and Washington State offices have have a ton of success as well. So. We can pretty much do everything from acquisition to resale and everything in between. So the vast majority of our conversation for the city of Sweet Home has focused around acquisition. What's the best tool for the job, whether it's Ford, Chevy, Ram? We're we're manufacturer agnostic when it comes to that. We just want to present you the best tool for the job, looking at different funding structures to help us pay for the vehicles, do more with less capital. Safety, maintenance programs, and then vehicle resale. But we do more than that as well. But the key part of our entire program is to buy the vehicle as low as we can and sell the vehicle when it makes the most sense before the vehicle becomes a fifteen year old unit in your fleet that is constantly getting repairs done, constantly in the shop. That's kind of the idea behind that. So the core function of what we do for our clients is help them identify the best tool for the job and again, the right time to cycle the vehicle out. When you go out and buy a vehicle on your own, you might get a thousand dollars off or two thousand dollars off the front end of the vehicle, depending on how you negotiate for it personally. But as a fleet company and as a government agency, you sometimes get nine to ten thousand dollars off the front end of a truck. So for example, you might go out and buy a thirty five thousand dollar pickup truck, but as the city of Sweet Home, you get that truck for twenty five thousand dollars. And you couple that with the fact that you guys typically only do anywhere from three to four thousand, sometimes up to seven thousand miles per year on your vehicles. To raise one, you have instant equity in your fleet the day you roll off the lot. So that allows us to do is use our resale avenues to help you capture that equity before the vehicle's not working at all. And when you couple that with the fact that you can again, sell the vehicle for almost a profit at times, with the fact that you have no, you know, downtime, no maintenance and low fuel cost, you combine all those things together and that's what we're focusing on. So our goal as a partner is not to tell you when to sell them and when to buy them and make all those decisions for you, but to work together with with Greg and his team over the Public Works Department to help make the right decisions for your fleet and bring that information to your attention and help you all make decisions as you budget from a year to year basis. So an example I showed everyone when I was first, you know, having this conversation with them is basically what you see on this slide here is that you can go out and buy a forty thousand dollar truck, basically from a M S R P, but you get it for twenty six thousand dollars being a government entity. You can turn around and sell that vehicle a year later for twenty seven thousand eight hundred dollars and you can net back a sixteen hundred dollar in essence equity gain from that vehicle. So you've in essence ran a vehicle for an entire year. You might have done one oil change on it, no brakes, no tires, no transmissions, no engines, it's all under warranty and you turned around and you sold that vehicle at the right time. Now, this does not apply to every single vehicle you have in your fleet at the city. Police units, for example. You might have an F five fifty with an expensive body on the back or a street sweeper. The focus of our attention is pretty much your one ton of vehicles down, but we can do pursuit vehicles as well. So we've had a lot of success doing police units for some other cities here local in Oregon, so I can speak about that as well. But that in a nutshell is what we're trying to accomplish is to help you all replace vehicles and then sell them at the right time. And that was my five minutes, best I can here for you guys. So if you have any questions, please, I'm here to answer them for you. And thank you.
Any questions? The counselors.
I have a question.
Counselor Gerson.
So where do you buy the vehicles from?
Yes, it's a great question. So we can do it two different ways. One is we can always buy from a local dealer. I'd say about thirty five to forty percent of what we buy for our clients in Oregon still come from dealers, just because you're going to have a vehicle that goes down or you need something immediately or whatever the case may be. But the vast majority of the vehicles you buy actually comes directly from the manufacturers. So we would compare Ford, Ram, G M, for example, what's the best tool for the job, what's the most least expensive option to get done, depending on what you're all looking for, and then order that vehicle directly from the manufacturer built to the specifications that you need.
Thank you. I oh, I have one more question.
Person.
So I noticed in reading this, it doesn't say what it's what what your financial benefit is of it.
Of course. So yes, we do charge interest if you are financing the vehicle or doing some form of a lease structure. We also have a management fee, which is a percentage charge of the total vehicle cost. And then we do charge a one time four hundred dollar service charge at the end of the lease to sell the vehicle on your behalf. We can also sell current vehicles and not under our program yet. So we can sell your current vehicles you have in your fleet.
Can you give us an idea what those numbers are or at least a ballpark?
Yeah, so interest rate right now, so what's interesting is you all just signed up for Sourcewell, which is. A national purchasing co op that we won an R F P for. So you have negotiated rates in there. I want to say, top of my head, it's point oh eight percent is the management fee of the cost of the vehicle. So the example I always give is if you have a twenty five thousand dollar vehicle, it's twenty five thousand dollar truck, you're paying roughly twenty to twenty five bucks a month for us to manage that unit.
I have Mr. I have a question. So it says on the very first line, the right to sell, you can have non exclusive right to sell any vehicles assigned to enterprise by customer. Will you explain that to me, please?
In essence, I don't know if you're speaking about the assignment agreement or if you're speaking about our actual agreement, but we can sell any vehicle that you allow us to in essence. Okay.
Okay, and that's under terms and conditions, but that's okay. And by the way, just my opinion, you've got the right vehicle on the screen.
That's what we're going with.
Yeah, so my vote may go that way.
Greg has chosen Ford, that makes you feel better.
Yeah, he's got good taste.
Do you have a do you have a suggestion time for turnover? I mean, for resale value? I mean, is it three years, five years? I know you want to sell it every year, but we can't do that, obviously, and I think most cities can't. But so if we have a vehicle, let's let's take the two thousand nineteen F one fifty X L crew cab, blah, blah, blah. So we have it for four years. I know it's going to not be the same. But I know that I know the Duramax from Chevrolet, they they sell really high after several years. So anyway, that's just a question, maybe you can't answer it, but.
Yeah, so in fact, everything that we've shown so far, we break everything down into a cents per mile. And so we evaluate that on a yearly basis. So this is not a this kind of partnership is not designed to be let me go buy you a truck and I'll talk to you when I need to talk to you at the end of the lease. We actually assign you an account manager and we sit down with you quarterly or two or three times a year and we provide you an annual client review, which tells you what your vehicles are worth today versus what you bought them for, if you're up or you're down or where you're at in the process. We want to constantly be a part of that discussion. Every truck is different. I will tell you an F one fifty, if you bought an F one fifty today and tried to sell it in a year, you make a profit off of it. So I would tell you to do that. But a F three fifty with a utility body on the back, it's got about fourteen grand in the back of it, you're correct, that's going to have a different life cycle than a plain Jane parks and rec F one fifty might. So it all depends on the truck, but we don't look at it from a cookie cutter approach. Every vehicle is going to have a different life cycle and we're going to present that information to you. So you guys can make decisions.
So Mr. May have one more question. So if you may be able to answer this, maybe you guys. So is there a penalty for us getting out of this contract with you? I did not read that part, maybe, but the thing is about fifty pages long. So is there a penalty for us if we don't like what's going on in a year? Is it at length of this contract?
There's no, there's no penalty for us to get out of the the contract with enterprise.
Okay.
We would just be required to finish off the lease agreements that that we currently have to pay those off and call it good.
So if they buy Chevrolet, I can make a motion. Could certainly make a motion. Done with this. Yeah. Brandon is correct, there are no early termination fees. Simply, once you sign for a vehicle code, that's all you're responsible for. If you never buy another vehicle from enterprise, then you never buy another one. That's how you get out of the contract.
Just want to clarify that this is straight from the manufacturers.
Not always, but the one, once we're going to be starting with, we're going to be factory ordering from the manufacturer, correct?
Okay, that's why I want to make sure that you're factory ordering this stuff.
Yes, correct.
So I have another question. So are we basically leasing this vehicle or are we buying the vehicle?
So the way we have them currently set up is what's it's called an equity lease. So real quickly, it's not like a standard net. So real quickly, it's not like a standard net lease that you would get at a dealership where you have wear and tear and mileage restrictions. This is basically just a flexible finance down to residual value versus a zero value, what you would normally do on a finance. But that's in essence what it is. It's not a typical lease that you'd buy from a dealer for yourself.
We do. We do have the option to to avoid the lease and just straight out purchase.
Correct.
That's always an option as well. It just it kind of depends on finances, financial health of the city, kind of the long-term goal of buying and selling and maximizing the value as to what's what's going to be most efficient.
Mr. Mayor, but we've been pretty blessed to be able to do what we've done so far. I hope that continues because I think you're putting in a money way for that particular thing. And and I know at least from the public works, it's been, I mean, I was very pleased, but I mean, it was kind of shocked too that we had, we were able to do that because it's been
more than 10 years on some of that stuff. So.
That's part of that that collaboration, the partnership between Enterprise and and the city to kind of decide what is going to be the best for the city in the long term. And again, to maximize the value of what we're doing here.
Well, I think it's a good, a good option that if, and I'm not saying we're going to do it, but we can purchase it. Because as everyone knows, models change. So the city may get a pickup or something that they really like. All of a sudden, you get, you go to look at the new new version, you don't like it at all. You say this one actually worked better for me than this one, then you have the option of sticking with it. And I think that's.
And I, from my perspective, I think it keeps some of the capital, the whole capital of it in our pocket. And we let it go at a time instead of just going out and buying it outright and then dealing at the end that we get to retain some of that. So. It helps the cash flow standpoint. Yeah. So instead of going out and buying a $30,000 truck, we'd be only have to invest six, $7,000 a year or something. I don't know what the price is, but per month, but we would make a one month or one, you know, pay that once a year or less. So we wouldn't go out and have this big expense.
Um, I I think you've answered this, but it's this is not like the book of the month clip, right? We don't show you don't show up with a new truck every month.
No, no, sir. This is you have all rights to the vehicle. We do hold title on the vehicle, but it's your vehicle. We don't pick it up because we want to pick it up. When you're done with it, you call us and we come grab it.
Okay, if we only order one under this contract and don't want any after that, we're under no obligation to this contract. We're under no obligation to take more than the one we want.
That is correct.
Okay.
Customer service is very important in a partnership like this. And if we're not providing it, you're not going to buy any more vehicles from us and we recognize that.
And and you you said that your fees are just for your example, the 25 bucks a month, whatever, the $400 at the end. And then there was an interest?
Yeah. So if you're financing the vehicle through the equity lease or through a typical finance, we do charge an interest rate.
Okay, okay. So and and it isn't like then some way, shape or form, when you sell this, it's real good to look at the example where you make money. But what if you're 20,000 bucks in the hole? Who makes up the 20,000? Is that us? Or do we get hit with an deficiency of some sort? Or you just take it, that's what it sold for and we go on to the next call, the next pickup?
It's a good question. So the short answer is yes, you'd be responsible for anything under the book value, what we can sell the truck for.
It's true.
The reality is, yeah, the reality is you you're only doing three or 4,000 miles on the vehicle. So unless you told the truck and then did not replace or repair the truck, that's the only way you'd ever be upside down that much on a truck.
I I understand. I just, I I've just dealt with them with the deficiency. And the only one I ever saw come back was a BMW. It actually paid for itself. Everybody else gets about 50% on the dollar if they're lucky. But that's the other thing. Like if you if you got a vehicle, a truck, kept it for four years and was one of the odd trucks, a 350 or whatever, you sold it and the book value is 30,000 bucks and you get it auctioned 15, we're liable for the other 15.
Uh, so the way the equity lease would be structured, you'd be paying down the vehicle over time, paying the depreciation down. So you shouldn't ever, I mean, I cannot imagine ever how we would, I don't even know how that would even happen, to be quite honest.
Okay.
Yeah. The reality is you're you're buying a truck. We're trying to minimize the amount of depreciation. These are, these are depreciating assets. They're never going to make you money. So we're trying to control the amount of depreciation you dump into a vehicle. That's the idea behind the model is to.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure. I just want to get in my mind, somebody had to be taking the deficiency if it didn't work out the way everybody wanted it to.
Correct.
If I might, again, well, that's, that's the, that'll be the purpose too of an annual kind of collaboration with myself and Public Works, probably the police department. We will, we'll work to figure all that out. If it looks like, you know, there, if it looks like it's not the right time to sell a vehicle, we'll hold on to it as long as it's still providing us the the need that we that we have. So.
And correct me if I'm wrong, worst case scenario, we buy a truck and we run it till it dies.
Right.
Which we're doing right now anyways.
Well, in in most vehicle purchases, there's, I call it the sweet spot. You go beyond that and you're going to start losing your hind end.
And that's.
That's the con. And I agree, I understand what.
But is there, is there a, if you do keep a vehicle and run it to the end, is there a, is a, is there a place in the in the continuum that 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 we would just, it would get down to close to zero and we just pay you off and own the vehicle?
That's correct. So all these leases are open ended from that perspective. So let's say, for example, at the end of, you know, 60 months, you got a $2,000 book value on the vehicle and you're like, well, we don't want to sell it. Well, you extend it out until you pay it off like a normal finance. You take title at the end of the of the vehicles being paid off. You like. So there's no cancellation or some form of crazy charge at the end. If you're done, you're done and you just take title. So you always have that option to do that at any point in time.
Okay. In that initial buying power, most people, when we buy a vehicle, we lose that just driving off the lot, just a good chunk right out of the gate. And so we're getting a lot of that behind us right out of the, right out of the get go.
That's correct. You're you're literally, I think on the last F-250 I quoted out, it was an 80, I think it was an $8,500 rebate. That's tremendous. And everyone else is doing 25, 30,000 miles a year, plumbing companies, HVAC companies, oil and gas, timber companies, they're trashing their vehicles. You guys don't have that problem. You're doing streets, you're doing 3,000 miles a year. They're in great condition. They sell so well back out in the open market. And that's where we come in to help out. We find the right buyer to buy your vehicles for you.
Mr. Mayor, so you you said something about rebate. Do you guys take that?
No. So the way we sell the vehicles invoice minus the best rebate on the behalf of the customer. You being government, you get government incentives regardless of what size of your city is.
Okay.
I have another question. So you said $25 a month. Is that per vehicle?
Per vehicle per month, depending on the vehicle. So if you buy a small sedan from us and it's a $17,000 sedan, and then you're paying like 15 bucks a month or 10 bucks a month, you know, just depends on the vehicle, what it costs.
And the $400 is per vehicle also?
At the end of the lease to sell the vehicle on your behalf, correct. So we actually pick the vehicle up, we take it back to our lot, we remarket it, we sell it for you. And we do the entire process for you and we deliver your new truck for you as well. So we handle the entire start to finish logistics process of selling your vehicles for you.
And Mr. Mayor, I think i- if you're selling at a regular auction, the seller pays and the buyer pays, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't know what that cost is, but I know that I'm pretty sure that's how that works.
For the record, we've been, since we started using GovDeals, that we have been, we have set up GovDeals so that the buyer pays both of those fees. The city hasn't had to pay any of those basically separation fees.
So Mr. Mayor, Jeff, would you weigh in on this? What you, what do you think about this?
Well, you know, police vehicles are definitely a little bit more unique than some of the public work, just because of the upfitting that has to happen after them. So it's one of these things we really just have to, I'd be really interested just weighing the options, you know, with our, the typical way that we purchase through the the state bid process and the upfitting with what Enterprise could bring to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Jeff, I've got a question. So who who does your 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 other stuff that you have to do, like the screening stuff? Who does that right now?
The upfitting we use typically one of two different companies here in Oregon. One's Wireworks and the other is called Lear. And we typically will just let them kind of bid against each other to see what, who can give us the best deal on the outfit for the the vehicle that we want.
Okay. So but the vehicle we that you pick and they buy has nothing to do with the extras that you need to put in there?
Correct. Well, you know, the vehicles that we're purchasing are typically pursuit rated, so we have a limited number to to choose from.
Yeah.
And and we can typically make, we decide which one we want to go with.
Yeah. And who, what's the guy's name?
Ryan.
Ryan. So can you, can you meet that challenge for them, for the police, for a vehicle that they need?
Correct. It'd be no different than from the, from the process, it'd be no different than they're doing now. We would compare all the manufacturers, all the options they have available to present that to them. So they have the, you know, break it down by again, by cents per mile so they can understand it. The reality is the police units, they know what they want. They know what they feel comfortable with. They've gone through a lot of heartsburns with like older, different models. So we don't want to rock the boat. That's not our, that's not our job here to do that. But we do help with being able to finance a portion of that outfit cost. We help with sourcing the vehicle, getting it to the right vendor, picking it up, the whole process of that. So just off topic, we've done police units for a few other local cities here that throughout this process would, I would have them reach out to and ask questions about.
Okay.
So I have a question. What percent are we talking about on this?
Which part?
If we get a vehicle, you're saying, and we do buy it through you, what kind of percent are we looking at potentially?
Percent. Yeah, go ahead, Brandon. Sorry.
I believe, so he said that that he thinks that the rate is, did you say 0.08% Ryan?
Correct, of the total vehicle cost, correct.
Right. So 0.08% of the total vehicle cost per month, which in his example, if it was $25 a month, it's about $300 a a year. And then the, if we kept that vehicle safe for a year, they'd get the $300 there and the $400 sale, that's a $700 check basically to to Enterprise for the management of of that vehicle, the purchase, the the acquisition and the sale.
So but that's for management, but to actually carry the loan or whatever they're talking about on a newer vehicle or even an expensive used vehicle, what is the percent that we'd be looking at? Is that in, is that, is that included?
No, I imagine that would be market rate, kind of going market rate at the time. It could, it could range from two and a half to to three. I think it would depend on kind of what what interest rates look like across, across the US.
That is correct.
And then it's not really a question. It's kind of a statement. Here we are coming out of we're in just started phase two of the COVID crisis. We have people that are unemployed, businesses that are hurting. And we're talking about entering an agreement to buy newer cars. I don't mind some improvements as we need them, but I think we should be looking at this in a couple of years and not right now. I I don't think it will bode well with our community.
So if I could, counselor, the whole idea with this is it will save us money versus costing us money and improve our cash flow. So we have more cash available on hand for things such as payroll than sinking it into the purchase of of vehicles.
I, I understand that, but I don't think they're going to remember that when they look around and see the city with newer vehicles. I just don't think so. They're, they'll begrudge it.
Well, just because we have the lease doesn't mean we have to use it, right? I mean, do we?
We we have all of the options here. So if we choose not to buy a vehicle in a given year, we don't have to buy a vehicle. If we choose not to sell a vehicle, we don't have to sell it. We have, we have some severe, we have significant flexibility in in how this arrangement would be set up.
Well, that's the impression I got right now was we're not necessarily just a green light and going down and buy a whole bunch of new vehicles.
Right, correct. This is still, there's still budgetary concerns to consider. There is still what fits into our overall picture. There is still a market. There is still, there is a a public consideration. So there, there are many factors that take place and we, Greg and I and Jeff, if he's, if if the police department is purchasing some, we'll, we'll take all of those into account before we move forward with any kind of agreement or lease agreement.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I, at this point, I don't think we're looking at buying a lot of vehicles this next year, except for one for the police, for the K-9 thing, correct? We have, you've got that in your budget, Jeff? The K-9 car?
You're correct.
Yes. So.
We budgeted two in Public Works, two full price vehicles.
Okay.
But then we still have a significant number of vehicles in our fleet that are 15 or more years old. And so this, the the premise around this is what can we do with the dollars that we've allocated? Can we, can we take advantage of this agreement to kind of help get us to a point where our fleet is up to date? Is where it should be so that we are not paying the maintenance costs, so that we are not spending more time in the shop than we are on the road? And really giving the crews the the equipment that they need.
And this is a refinement, right? This is information is given to us so we can make decisions. And then we're going to put into that budget and come to budget committee, which is then going to come to you guys and council, just like we do on every other.
Yeah, I was going to say, ultimately in the end, Ron, this comes before council on all approval on.
So Mr. Mayor, if if we, if we run this for a year, we can maybe have an idea and see what's going on.
We may not even use it for a year.
Yeah.
We have that much flexibility.
Yeah. So.
Mr. Mayor.
This is Ryan from Enterprise. That's what we've talked about so far, just so you all know, is we talked about, you know, slowly walking into this. We're not doing 25 vehicles at the gate. We're talking about three or four trucks to start to get an idea of what it would look like for you all and evaluate.
Do we currently have any vehicles that we are have a loan for or these, do we own all of our vehicles outright and?
We own everything right now.
We have two, well, I think we just finished off. So we think, I think we have one police vehicle that still has a lease on it. But for the last nearly three years, we have been purchasing outright all of our vehicles.
Does anything change with those vehicles that we are still, okay? My other question is just a technical question. If we go to move to approve this on page 115, under terms and conditions, point number three, is that $400 fee that's been mentioned, the fee that's being referenced under service fee? Cause it's blank at this time. So.
Ryan, I'll defer to you on that one.
Yeah, it's $400 for this charge, the end of the lease.
So he'll send us an agreement that Ray will end up signing if the council authorizes the agreement. It'll have that $400 number.
I have one more question. Is his name Ryan?
Yes.
Ryan, can you buy back codes?
I wish we could. I wish we could. I get asked every time. I'm sorry. We, we just started doing pursuit vehicles a few years back and we'll probably start doing ambulances here soon, but not only yet, Ryan, yet.
Yeah.
I'm done.
I have a whole other question.
Counsel Gerson.
So Ryan, would you help us sell trucks that we already have?
That is correct. So here, here's the the thing I would recommend. If you have a 1997 Ford Ranger that's worth $600, you don't need Enterprise to charge you 400 to sell 600. So what I'm talking about is when we're selling a $26,000 truck, finding the right home for said truck and a $400 service charge is nothing compared to that. We continually sell above black book, which is the commercial fleet blue book rating. So above auction prices. So we sell a million vehicles a year. We take pride in it. We're trying to make the most amount of money for your vehicles. If it's a matter of just like, you know what, I don't want to deal with it. I got 10 cars back there. Just get rid of them. Then we're more than happy to come pick them up for you. But I just want to make sure I clear that part up for you all.
Okay. So on this agreement, as we looking, as we're looking at it, as Counselor Coleman brought up, it doesn't say the administrative fee of $400. It's not written in there.
I will make sure that is put in there. It's in the Sourcewell agreement as well, but I will make sure I put it in there for you all before, as Brandon's point, before you sign.
Okay. Or the maximum permitted by law. So we definitely want the $400 written.
Yeah, no, I don't know. Yeah. It's not a percentage. So it's not like if we sell your truck for 30,000, we charge a percentage. It doesn't matter what the vehicle is. It's just flat.
Okay.
And it's locked in at time of lease. So five years down the road, it wouldn't change on you or anything. And it's locked in at time of lease. So five years down the road, it wouldn't change on you or anything.
So I have a que, a question for Greg Stedman. The, would we be looking at truck chassis so we could put the work boxes on them instead of paying for new work boxes every time?
That may be more of a question for Ryan. I know that, that we, in the last couple of years, have purchased chassis and we have moved dump beds onto those, but we also purchased a new dump bed because we needed that. But Ryan, I, I don't know how that looks when we get into purchasing trucks that already have the dump bed on it and so forth. I mean, we don't want to give you back a, just a chassis without the dump bed.
To be honest, you can do it both ways. We can evaluate that for you. Let's say I come to you in year three and I say, hey, this 2020 F-350 with a 14,000 utility body in the back is worth $35,000. You bought it for $37,000. And if you sell it with a box on it, you'll take a $2,000 loss over a three-year period. And if you divide that out, you're basically paying 50 bucks a month for this vehicle. Or you could sell without the box, put the new box and new chassis and sell it for X. So that's something we evaluate for a lot of our clients. We do have a lot of clients out there in the, in the lumber industry, oil and gas, that flip out bodies on new chassis and just keep that stuff rolling. So we can definitely evaluate at the time.
Any other questions of Counselors? Goble, Nash, Gorley?
No. No, sir.
Okay, I need a Council Directive.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to, number two, move to authorize the agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Second. Second.
That was Counselor Nash, and second in it, and Counsel Trask made the motion. My roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Goble?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show, we have five yeses with two noes. Moving forward with the Enterprise Fleet Management Agreement. Next up is the request for Council action intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County for emergency small business and micro enterprise assistance, CDBG application and sub-grantee agreement with Community Lending Works.
This is on page 120 of your, of your packet. Turn this over to Blair. Kind of explain to you, there's been a few new parts and we can give you the most up-to-date information. So turn it over to number two.
So as you recall, last week, we had a special meeting where we had a public hearing for this community, community development block grant application. That's, that's, that was required for the application itself. The application that we are planning for this small business assistance program would be throughout Lynn County with the exception of the incorporated areas of Albany. That is something that, the reason for doing that is, one, there, I've been in communication with a number of cities in Lynn County that all were interested in this program. And we talked amongst ourselves and realized that Lebanon and Sweet Home were in the best position to make the application because we had recently done CDB, CDBG applications, that we were situated better. The other reason to join with everyone else and have this go beyond our city limits is that the application would be more competitive. If we applied just for ourselves, first of all, we would be less likely to, to actually receive a grant. Second of all, any grant, if we did receive a grant, it would be far less than what we could get if we joined with everyone else and had a larger area. That being said, if, if we're going to do that, the application requires that we have an intergovernmental agreement with the county because we're essentially applying for a grant almost in their name, kind of because it's covering their jurisdiction. And so this, before you, is an agreement that I have worked out with the county. It does not obligate any sharing of funds. It, basically all it says is we're cooperating for the sake of this program and this application. Nobody's putting any money into it. It's the money that's received from the feds is what goes out and goes into this program. So there's no, there's no funding, there's no match from either party. It basically saying the county is, is, is approving of our application and is approving of this program working in our jurisdiction. The other component that I don't have a copy for you yet is a, a, an agreement with Community Lending Works. This particular program requires that we go, that we work with what's called a, a community development financed institution, CDFI, to administer the funds. Essentially, we're the applicant, but any funding that's received is going to go through this other organization and they're, they're going to be the ones who are going to be issuing the grants and handling all the money and verifying applications and such. And so we have to have an agreement in place for the application, at least a draft agreement, with them that essentially outlines what their responsibilities are and what our responsibilities are. Again, there's no exchange of funds here because the CDFI, Community Lending Works in this case, they get their funding from the grant and not from us. And so that agreement, we don't, I don't have a draft of it yet. But again, it will not affect the, it doesn't affect the city's budget. It simply affects the operation of the program. Because this application is a first come, first served application, we're trying to get everything pulled together and get it submitted as soon as possible. It's one of the reasons why we had the special meeting last week, helped shorten down the process. And so there's a couple of things that would be good to have you authorize tonight. One is the intergovernmental agreement with the county. Board of County Commissioners met this morning and approved it and signed it. And so that is just waiting for you to authorize Ray to sign it. And then second, if we can get some authorization to enter into an agreement with Community Lending Works for the administration of these funds, then once we have that agreement all worked out and have our staff review it, we could include that draft as part of our application as soon as possible. So any questions on that? I know it's, it's rather complex and it's not anything that people normally deal with, but unfortunately, that's the way the federal government works in these matters. But I can try to answer your questions as, as best I can.
So, Barry, you explain to me a little bit about Community Lending Works. I've never heard of them.
They've been, been around since about 2011. They are a partner of Dev Northwest, which is a, an org, is, used to be, part of it used to be Willamette Housing, and now they're Dev Northwest. They're the, the organization that our housing rehabilitation, CDBG grant is going through. So they're handling that part. CLW, Community Lending Works, is basically their financial arm. And they already provide funding to businesses in the community on a loan basis. They, they, they act as a small business loan provider and, and have a number of activities. We've been looking to cooperate with them for a while now to make sure that small businesses have access to the capital that they need. So that's, in a nutshell, that's who they are.
Need a question from Counsel? Any questions, Counselor Nash, Goble, or Gorley?
No. No.
No.
Okay, this time I need a question.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to always see the man who has signed those policies since we've been CDBG.
I have a motion second. My roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson? Counselor Nash?
Yeah.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Goble?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
We're going to show that we have seven yeses and we won't make the approval of that. This time at 10:55, we'll open up a hearing, round 2021, approved budget. Start off with a declaration by members of the Council of biased, conflict avengers or any ex parte communication. I'll be rolling all of these.
Mayor Moller?
No.
Counselor Gerson? Counselor Nash?
No.
Counselor Trask?
No.
Counselor Goble?
No.
Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Coleman?
No.
Let the record show there is no, any bias to Council, conflict of interest, or any ex parte communication.
The floor, the floor of this body is the, the 2020, 2021 approved budget. The Sweet Home Budget Committee met on April 29th to resolve the budget, the budget letter, the budget message. What words? Budget message from the city manager, who's also the budget officer of the city charter. And then subsequently met, met on May 5th, May 14th and May 19th to get to this approved budget. You're all aware of this because the seven of you sit on this committee as well, but just to refresh your awareness then. The public meeting notice, the LB1 document that is required by the state of Oregon, was published on our, the city's social media accounts, as well as our website. Kineplera also published this through their Facebook so that, that we can try to get the word out throughout this public hearing. But this budget is, is, has been extended by the, by the Budget Committee. There were some changes, if you'll remember, which I, which are included in your, your books. Changes to our approved budget, including the addition of one FTE in the police department for a police officer. The revenues, the marijuana revenues were moved from the police department to the general fund. And, oh, you, the, the Budget Committee decided to levy the full $7.85 for the police levy, adding $230,000 back to the police department budget. So all of that is included in your approved budget document before you. If you have any questions, then you may remain.
Any more questions? At this time, we're opening up the public commons. The floor is open for public commons. Those who testify must be recognized by the mayor, be on the microphone, state your full name and address for the record. No one shall be disorderly, disruptive, or abusive during this hearing. Testimony must be relevant and done, and done, and repetition be avoided. Any call?
No.
Any online?
No.
Okay, so here, no one must be comforted, recognized. At this time, the night, a further discussion of the Council. Anything, Counsel Goble, Nash, or Gorley?
No. No. No.
No question, no question.
Okay.
No, no, no question, no question.
Okay, and we'll be all sitting in the seat, and we will be sitting in the same time, correct? Depending on whether by Council or by phone.
Yeah, and if I may, so as you're going through this document, if you have questions, certainly feel free to reach out to Ray or I. If you do have changes that you'd like to make, let us know so that we can get those included. We'll cover them obviously in the next council meeting, but that way we can prepare the, the necessary resolution, adopted resolutions. The next council meeting will be on June 23rd. For all intents and purposes, this budget has to be adopted by June 30th. So we want to make sure that already on the 23rd of us, we've got a separate meeting in order to do budget adoption. So please let us know if you have concerns or things that you would like to change as you write as City Council.
ordinance bills, as Counsel heard, the scene approved for first reading. Order number seven, for 2020, water system upgrade.
This is a case interesting.
Let me just read it. Orderance Bill number seven, for 2020, ordinance number, and ordinance amending Sweet Home Municipal Code Chapter 13.20, that pertains to connection to water system previously inspected chemical area. Whereas, ordinance number 1120 was passed in 1998, and codified as SHMC Chapter 13.20, in parentheses, requiring properties that had wells in a given area of Sweet Home that were affected by a chemical spill connected to the city water system. Whereas the area has been tested by DEQ and has been determined that groundwater quality in parts of the area has improved to a point where some wells within the area may not be affected by the chemical spill contaminants. Whereas this amendment will allow all well owners and auctionees to have their well tested to show that the well has a water of quality concentration below the state and federal standard for the chemical concern, so that the mandatory hook-up requirement no longer be required on said property. Now therefore, in Sweet Home Municipal, it's false, section one, Sweet Home Municipal 13.20.0. Two five is hereby titled exemption from required connection created to re-solvent. And owner of property located within the critical infected area may petition the city for an exemption from the connection requirement to allow use of well water as that property for domestic purposes. The exemption will be granted if the owner can demonstrate that the well water does not contain contaminants that are capable of concern of DEQ tech, water risk based concentrations, RBCs, in parentheses, and federal safe drinking water, maximum contaminant levels, in parentheses, MCL, chemicals that include, include trichloroethylene, tri-chloroethylene, and one comma one dash dichloroethylene. At least two well water samples, in parentheses, one from the dry season, dash July through October, dash, and one from the wet season, dash January through May, in parentheses, shall be tested and demonstrate that concentrations of chemicals concerned are below the RBCs and the MCL, representing water samples must be collected by the laboratory. represented water samples must be collected by the laboratory personnel or environmental professionals, well water professionals or water pump professionals with experience collecting water samples. Testing the volatile organic compound for samples shall be analyzed by a laboratory accredited by the state of Oregon laboratory accreditation, uh, using E P A method, uh, five two four point two two, or E P A method. Eighty two sixty, and I, uh, I'll try right now. My memory serves me, there's no, uh, period there. It's eighty two sixty, uh, with no period. But to the, to test for, uh, volatile organic compounds, including the chemicals of concern, uh, detected, uh, concentrations of, uh, contaminants, uh, contaminations of contaminants of concern must be below the respective R V Cs and M C Ls for the wet and dry season sample. Notwithstanding the rough process, the owner may submit E E Q prior of lab test results containing a D E Q recommendation. And that is for, uh, or for an exemption from the, uh, connection requirement. Passed by the council, approved by mayor this blank day of blank twenty twenty. Mayor tests the city manager, uh, that's insufficient, see.
Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
No.
Council directive, moving this on to second reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion second by roll call.
Mayor Muller?
Yes.
Counsel Gerson?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yeah.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Counsel Goble?
Yeah.
Counsel Gory?
Did you say?
She couldn't do it. Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
At the record show, we have seven eyes with no nays to move this forward for second reading by title only on June twenty third. This time we have a second reading of ordinance number nine for twenty twenty, ordinance amending the official zoning map by title only.
Ordinance bill number nine for twenty twenty, ordinance number, and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Any questions of councillors? ordinance number nine for twenty twenty, second, uh, reading by title only.
Which page is the ordinance?
Oh, page.
Okay, thirty. I just want to make sure that sometimes they don't add an ordinance amending official. Thank you.
Quick question.
Counsel Nash?
Was this for the property behind the apartments down there?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It's off of forty fifth, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Council directive.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. So moved, is recommended.
Counsel Gory made a motion.
I'll second it.
Counsel Gerson is seconded, move forward for third and final reading on June twenty third. By roll call, please.
Counsel Gerson?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
There we go, yeah.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Counsel Goble?
Yes.
Counsel Gory?
Yes.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Like I show, we have seven eyes with no nays moving forward for third and final reading on June twenty third. Uh, no third, no third readings. Moving on to reports of committees, any reports the committee, council members want to bring up. Okay. Move on down to reports of city officials, mayor's report. As everybody's aware, I had surgery last week, um, not successful. Want to say thank you for fellow councillors and this entire city staff for the prayers, cards, and well wishes, especially the prayers. As a well aware that they had removed some cancer out of me, and it was successful. Um, thank you. City manager report.
I anticipate being out of the office, uh, as of this Friday, uh, in, well into the following week, uh, to attend the funeral for my father-in-law. So you're aware of that. Blair. Blair and I are, uh, faced with a significant amount of work to do in the arena of economic development and not a lot of funding to do it. So, uh, we would like to set up a workshop with the council so you can prioritize our, uh, how we are to move forward with this. We've got a good list of, of projects to do and, and we're going to need to know how you would like us to move forward on those. So if you can, uh, just keep track of your calendar and probably at the next meeting, Blair will ask us if we can, uh, agree on a date to do that. Uh, there's a significant amount of, of items on the list, uh, some of which have little to no cost, some of which the cost is fairly extraordinary. So we'll be asking for your direction on how you want us to move forward on those things. Do, we talk often about the quality of staff we have here at the city and the quality of our, um, executive team, and that includes several members of people who are not department heads, but who you might term as middle management. And I am honored to serve with each and every one of them. As a group, we have come together involuntarily, decided to give up our COLAs next year in an effort to support, uh, all of the other staff with the city and ensure or do our part, uh, given the uncertain economic futures to not have to lay anybody off. Again, this is strictly voluntary. We, we had a discussion as a group, uh, and not a single person in this group hesitated to offer to do this and, and give this up uh, for the benefit of our community and for the benefit of the people that we work with every day. We'll monitor the financial situation, and if at some point in time, which I can probably guarantee will not be any time before November, uh, we're in a situation that financially we can reinstitute those COLAs or, um, even potentially back pay, uh, we will notify you and, and move forward with that. Pretty impressive group of people we have here to volunteer to do that. Uh, and to do that for their team and to do that for the community. So I want to make council, uh, aware of that. Uh, and, and thank, uh, thank the people who are privileged to work with every day. That's what I've got for you. Thank you.
I have to agree with that. I think we got an excellent city staff, very commendable. Any questions to councillors?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would, I've talked to Ray, I, I know he wants to come back sooner than later, but I would, I would highly recommend you take as many days as you need.
Yeah, I agree.
And I say speakly for the council, our condolences on behalf of the council.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a concern.
Go ahead.
Can I bring up a concern?
Sure.
So in looking over the reports from the city, we have five issues pending with O dot. Is there any way we can get a liaison to help us with the resolution of any one of these?
Uh, I think their names are Senator Gerard and currently Representative Springer.
Well, it, I mean, it, this is, this is, just goes on and on and on and on and on, and there doesn't seem to be any resolution.
Um, I think, so we, we are moving forward on two of them. One, you've probably seen they're doing a lot of, um,
surveying.
Surveying, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, for one of the projects, um, I, I, I don't know what we can do.
It just seems kind of.
My understanding is that's not abnormal.
Well, I know, but do we have to accept it as normal?
Uh, it's kind of their money.
They move at their own speed, that's why they're called the Oregon Department of Time.
Okay, I won't bring it up again.
Well, the thing was really frustrating for me, uh, uh, Ms. Mayor, is that we have, we have speed signs that can go on post anywhere, and we can't even get that signed off for. I mean, how simple is that? Yeah, anyway, I'm done too.
Oh, look, we're still on J point.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
My great-great-grandkids will see that through. Hopefully.
Enough said.
Okay, moving on, the department directors' reports.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to call your attention to the Public Works Director, Greg Springling. As you're aware, we caught a huge water leak that we've been searching for, for some time here about, what, a month ago now, probably?
Yeah.
And, uh, we have some data to share with you.
Oh.
Um, I'll, I'll turn it over to Greg and.
Yeah, so this is the water loss kind of graph that I brought back several times to you guys, and we said we'd hopefully start seeing that downturn. Well, we finally compiled some more readings and averages, um, over the last quarter or month, a little bit more than that um, from the treatment plant, and then we also, um, it was, when we did, when we made this repair, literally the next day, they went out and re-reed all the meters, so it was kind of timely. You can see that, that there was a significant drop in what our, uh, water loss or unaccounted for water is, um, and that's kind of what I was hoping for. Now with this, as we get more and more data points over the next month, quarter, so on, I believe this probably number will drop even a little bit more, but what we're looking at right now, we were at before, um, about a forty eight, forty nine percent, uh, water loss, and we're probably sitting around twenty nine, twenty eight right now. Those numbers should probably round down a little bit more, and they're, and we're still searching for other areas, um, misreadings or maybe some things at the treatment plant that waters be accounted for maybe not twice or things like that. So, um, we're still improving how we're dialing in on some, and, and the water that we're not accounting for. But this, um, confirms that the number that you're seeing in that drop is roughly even higher than that three hundred and forty three thousand gallons, it's more up in around the three seventy, and it could potentially, as we keep going, that number could even rise. So it was, it was a big leak, it was bigger than what we even thought, um, but it's pretty close to what we saw in that weir, so. Whether we've done a seven-day averages and we've repeated that over the last month, then we have thirty-day averages, and everything's still in line with that, that sort of thing.
Is your arm getting sore?
Which one?
Which one, where do you pat your back with?
No.
To give the council an idea, uh, I reached out to, uh, I think Tyler, the athletic director at the high school, and he gave me some dimensions or rough dimensions to figure out the volume of the high school pool. We could fill that pool pretty darn close to three times a day with what was leaking.
Wow.
Out of that leak. You could, three times every day, you could fill the high school swimming pool with that leak.
Let's not do that.
Okay, just back in two thousand eleven, there was a, this is when previous staff realized something had occurred, and there was a big freeze, and they had everybody out looking. You can see it's kind of stayed up that way for eight, nine years now, so.
Gosh.
That was it, at least for that one leak, and it was just right on top of the storm drain, there was no other way. It wasn't, it would have shown itself if it hadn't been a storm drain right there. It would have showed itself in the sewer or somewhere. So I'm glad we found it.
Yeah.
I will show you this again once you really want.
Could you bring somebody that actually did the work with you just to let us know?
Brandon, do you want to kind of chime in with this a little bit? I mean, we've had some other discussions internally between you and Ray.
Yeah. So a couple of months ago, uh, we brought you, um, a resolution for the new water rates, which included a slight increase uh, of approximately a dollar seventy one for the average, median user in Sweet Home. At that time, we were chasing water loss like crazy, number one. Had not, I don't think we quite corrected or found or patched that leak. Two, COVID had just kicked off, and so we had a discussion about potentially revisiting, um, this issue. We have some projects that we brought to you, and some of those were specifically to maintain the integrity of the water system. If you recall, we discussed the backwash. Uh, we need to redesign and re-engineer the backwash system that we utilized at the treatment plant to maintain the integrity and avoid a, uh, potential boil issue. We also talked about the variable flow devices, which allow us to gradually increase the pressure throughout the system versus hammering the system and causing additional leaks. Uh, so because of the age of the standard system, of the delivery system. We also talked about replacing some of the pieces of the delivery system because of their age particularly, uh, as well as some other minor things, and those things led us to ask uh, council for an increase of about a dollar seventy one a month because we felt they were that important. Given the find we had, where now we think we've cut in half our, our water loss, we're not sure it's as important to be doing some of that work, particularly given we're in the face of a recession. And is it fair, and should, should we be right now, and is it appropriate to be increasing rates if we don't have So what we wanted to propose to you is, um, essentially, if we, and we've talked about this, and Greg's throwing daggers at me right now as I mention this, kicking the can down the road only a year for some of that work. However, still doing the backwash and the V F D. And if we were to commit to those two and leave the other projects out, we believe we could complete all of that work without any raise to our water rates this year. So we have said we would bring this back to you if we thought we could at any time. So we would like to present that to you, we could rescind that, we could not collect it. You know, one of your goals is to be responsive, um, a responsive government entity, and this may be an opportunity to do that. So yes, we are asked, or I am asking if you're interested in at least kicking one project, which is essentially the Ninth Avenue Waterline, off, putting that off for one year, some other little things that, that we may or may not need to tackle. And as a result, we would, we don't think we would have to raise water rates at all for this year.
Sounds great.
Well, Greg is sitting there um, kind of a compare and contrast. Greg's job is to get things done. Greg wants to work, Greg's guys want to do work and they want to get things done. Our delivery system is lacking, um, and the fact that we found a three hundred and fifty plus thousand gallon per day leak is an example of that. The other thing Greg will want me to point out is, since we have fixed The other thing Greg will want me to point out is, since we have fixed that leak, it has increased pressure on the delivery system, and we are seeing an increase in leaks over the past few weeks because of that. So there is a trade-off, there may be unintended consequences. But we wanted to, or I wanted to at least present you with that option, just now that we are three months wiser, and maybe the crystal ball is a little less hazy, or the magic eight ball might be a little more accurate, I don't know. But with that, I want to make sure that Brandon's able to fully explain and Greg to fully explain, because we're not necessarily in agreement on this, and that's okay. But I want to make sure that you hear all of the sides before you make any kind of decision and ask questions before we move forward, so.
Before we, before we do that, Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion to revisit this subject?
Yes, we would.
I think you would need a motion if you were to decide to change it, I don't think you would need it to discuss it.
Well, if it, if, was it on the agenda? And we're bringing it up and talking about it again.
It's a, it's a part of my department report.
So it would need to be a motion to revisit, as being suggested of looking at the rates and going through this thoroughly.
I guess that was my thought, was it, because we're revisiting it, but I'm open for your thoughts on that, too.
Absolutely, you could, could make that motion if you thought that was necessary.
Counselors' thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I, you're gonna, you had four you wanted to do, and you're going to take two off the, off the table. Okay, so the one, Alpha 49th, is still on the table. The backflow thing or whatever it was, the second or whatever it was, $1,000 for the.
That's for the water treatment plant, that's the VFDs and the backwash, that would still be on the table, we got to fix that.
Okay.
So respectfully, respectfully, we had a motion on this subject before, and I wasn't on the prevailing side, so I can't make the motion, but if we're going to be thoroughly vetting this out, we need to, because it does matter with protocol later on issues, if you have a counselor that keeps wanting to bring something up, and the counselor doesn't want it, we do need to make a motion and, and put that on the floor to discuss this, the way it should be done. Follow that process. Am I right, Mr. Snyder?
Well, what I was looking at, as this, as the, as Ray was doing his report, I was considering it just staff reporting, as would be the, the other staff. If you, I believe you need a motion if you are going to revisit it. I don't know if you actually need a motion for the, for staff to, to talk to, to talk about it, with, with them just being talked, talked about, if you're going to discuss it through council, I think you need a motion.
Yeah, I agree with that. That was kind of, was my, my, my thought on that. Council Gorle, Council Nash, your thoughts?
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, that the council revisits the water rate discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all fair by roll call.
Council Nash?
Yeah.
Council Trask?
Yes.
Council Goebel?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes.
Council Gerson?
Yes.
Well, like, reg, show of seven eyes, no nays, to revisit this.
Mr. Mayor, so is there some way that we, can we, can we put this off until our next council meeting, so we have more time to think about this, or do you want to, do we want to do it tonight? I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking.
So I'm going to tell you yes, Brandon's going to tell you no.
What I'm going to tell you is that.
It's here, it's here, and then here. So.
We enacted these rates with a, with a May 18 start date, so that when they, basically, when we went out to read meters, come June 18th, they would be ready for the first bill basically of our fiscal year, where we'd start collecting in July. If we wait until the meeting on the 23rd, I will have already billed a month at the new rate, because it will have been too late.
Okay.
So we can cert, you could certainly do that, you just, you would end up, i- if you made a decision different than what is currently in place, I would end up reducing or changing the bill in the second month of the fiscal year.
And we could, Greg, you could make a motion to suspend it for a month, and then we wouldn't apply that rate until following.
That's possible, too.
Mr. Mayor?
So Greg? Top, explain to me, please, about the Ninth Avenue issue, are we talking about major leaks on Ninth Avenue? Are we talking about just the conversion of the two-inch pipe? I mean, I know you've explained it to us before, but if we don't, if, excuse me, if we don't do it, what are the ramifications of not doing Ninth Avenue?
It was like the first words out of my mouth when we started having this debate, was just because we found that large leak did not make our two old, 80-year-old two-inch pipes new.
Right.
We still have water quality issues in the avenues, we have old pipe, we need to get those fixed. And, and it's not just Ninth Avenue, we need to do all two-inch. I told city manager, Mr. Towery, that before I leave here, I'm going to try to get all those fixed.
Reformal now?
Yeah, trying to be.
Try to be respectful for a change.
So, you know, I, I, I think, and the people that live in the avenues understand the turbid water a little bit at times, you know, so I want to fix that, and I know having a brand-new poly-six-inch main versus an old galvanized two-inch served the community for 60, 80 years. And we'll get there, but I think, I think we need to take a look at this, I think we need to be able to still do the things we do, but make no certain this leak did not, it's not our fix. What, what that did for us was lower energy costs right now, which is going into Jacob's pockets. It lowered our chemical costs at the water treatment plant that is going into Jacob's pockets. At some point, we will be able to reap those benefits. And, and the energy and the things that we were able to do with that plant, we will see that 30% roughly. But as it goes out into the distribution system, that's all of us to fix and repair, and that takes money. And I know we've spent a lot of money, and we have debt with the water treatment plants. So my position is, is I'm, I'm here to support the team, but we're going to have to get to work. What I said was this year that we would start designing and get something on paper, and maybe we can look at that project as just not Ninth Street, but maybe we do something else, we get it on paper, and then we can, Towery go to work, Ray go to work, go to our, our Senator's office, our reps, and we can start pounding on their doors like we did on the wastewater plant. And let's get some money to bring it into the water system.
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, I have a, slides to go through the rates, to go through some adjustments to the projects. Out of this session, I will kind of be the person, like, I have both sides of the kind of the financial puzzle to present, and then Greg certainly has, you know, projects to discuss and questions you may have. And then Ray has, has a valuable opinion here as well, as far as, you know, what does, what's the public perception? What does it look like with COVID, and there's a lot of things that we need to consider. So if it pleases the council, I've got a few slides, run through the rates, kind of give you an idea of the financial picture, and then we could.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, we, we have no idea the savings we're going to have yet, is that correct?
Right.
Right, we don't know, it's just still out there, so we don't.
In theory, we should have some sort of savings down the road.
Yes, but we don't know what that is.
Right.
So that's something else we have to consider, so I'm, I'm okay, good.
I'm okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Gorley.
Mr. Mayor, so at this point, because the hour is getting late, we could, if I got this right, make a motion to suspend the rate increase for the time being, and give us time to revisit this, and let the public come and speak and do it the way we're supposed to do it. Am I right on that?
Correct.
Mr. Towery thinks so.
So I make that motion, I, I make that motion at this point.
I think I could second that.
Motion second, let's go ahead and do a roll call on that motion.
Council Gerson?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yeah.
Council Trask?
Yes.
Council Goebel?
No.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. That's everybody. At the rect, show we have six yeses with one no, we'll head and suspend this, put together all the information so we can revisit this. And, because I definitely would like to see some more information, and I, I'm kind of got mixed feelings on this, because in past years, we've kicked the can down the road and looked at what it's done to us. So I'm all for freezing rates, don't get me wrong, but on the same token, we want to be careful, because again, in past years, we kicked the can down the road and cost us dearly, so. So we have that on the next council agenda, that'd be appreciated.
Can I real quick, I missed who made the motion, if you seconded to, essentially was to table the new water rate for one month?
Yes, it was.
Gorley was the motion.
Yeah, and I, was I the second? Yeah, I was taking a nap, so I don't remember. Mr. Towery.
Council business good of orders, anything else, anything else, Council Gorley, Goebel, and Nash, anything you want to bring up?
No. Not for the good of the meeting.
No. It's very good discussion, however.
Yes, it was.
Okay, if nothing further, we will go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting at 8:35. So we made no one happy.